All right, this is by 15, March 5th, 2024. I will call the meeting to order. Ashley, we do roll call for this.
Lindberg.
Here.
Rudolph.
Here.
Shaven.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
We all received the agenda. I don't think there are any additions, subtractions, changes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Peterson. Get better hearing on this side. Apparently.
Good need of roll call.
We roll call.
Oh geez.
That's okay.
I'm fired. Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
I thought Troy's name in the first meeting I sat in this chair. Looked right in. All right, any conflicts, state those now or along the way. Everybody kind of knows that routine. Consent agenda is under one motion and one roll call vote. The minutes of the February 20th, 24 council meeting. The claims list 1309 in the amount of $83,399.20. Everybody saw those, they're some larger ones, but I don't think anything was out of the ordinary. Anybody have questions, concerns about any of those? And then renewal application for Family Dollar Stores of Iowa Class B Retail Alcohol License. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger. Sorry, Troy.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
And then under the public hearing present to be heard about, we have a regarding the sale of city-owned lots 40 through 44, 21 through 23, and 25 in the GH Christiansen subdivision to S&amp;R Baker Real Estate. There are a couple gentlemen here, Gene, you said maybe you guys wanted to make a comment or two about, you gave our presentation last time, so make a few more comments to what the...
Not unless anybody has any questions on what our plans or intentions are, but I think we covered that pretty well in that presentation, but we decided to make sure that we were here in case anybody did.
We had the Public Property Committee meeting just pulled up here, which was in your packet and published in the paper, that this is the public hearing. Again, the intention is with the nine remaining residential lots, it's always been intended to individually, or in this case, there's an entity that's wanting to create some residential homes. And the contract which we put together considers the first five lots, 40 through 44, within the first two years, and then the other four within three years. And one specific note in there that is that the quick claim deeds will be issued upon receipt of building plan and permit. Kind of a linchpin or lever in there. And then it'd be wonderful to sit here, and I know that's the intention with this group, is to have nine new residential homes in that area within three years. The last caveat, just for restating this and also for the camera, is there are two lots there that are currently the community garden, which we've spoken about before. Those two community garden lots will be protected through this growing season, and then we'll be evaluating other community garden spots after this year. So, you know, that's been a nice quality of life initiative over the last number of years, and we'll look into other potential space for that. That's all I had to add additionally.
These are for single-family houses, correct?
Yes, at this time we are.
Yes.
It is single-family homes, one-offs. We do have plans right now for a spec home to put in. That's also going to be our model home until that one gets sold, so that way we can meet people, they can come in, walk around, get the concept of. But that is going to take place this spring, so we're going to work on that one right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. And we don't have to move to open, close any kind of a hearing, we just move on to be resolution 2558.
Uh, nope, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Good job, Ashley, because it wasn't written down, so hey.
She's back to the...
Then we move on to...
Redo it.
Yes.
Yep. 2558, resolution approving the execution and entering into a real estate contract with S&amp;R Baker Real Estate for the sale and demands of city-owned property described as lots 40 through 44, 21 through 23, and Lot 25 in GH Christiansen subdivision in the city of Harlan, Iowa.
Sorry, make that motion.
Second. Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Can I make one additional comment over that final vote?
Sure.
Sure.
Because I'm never short of words, just for transparency with the public, that as is stated in the resolution, which is in the contract, is that the lots are $1,000, which has been priced before, and the first five are being sold with a total of $5,000 payment. And then, which is in the contract as well, is that within the next 30 days, S&amp;R Baker will come in and will negotiate the contract, exchange the receipt of $5,000, and that's when the clock starts ticking. So, that's all contemplated in the contract and then restated in the resolution. And lastly, this came up, just a hint for camera and transparency, that these are market rate, I know it's come up, is are there other types of, be it credit or income-based, and these are market rate residential homes. Sorry to interrupt your motion, but that was additional comment.
Nope.
Your vote.
Good information.
Okay. Roll call. Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you for coming. Good luck with your project.
Exactly. Excited to see you. It'll be fun.
If you reach out when you want to set up that time. Sounds good.
You can stay for the rest of it, or you can, you're welcome to leave too. Under other business, we need to approve the Water Trails Development Grant for River Access Water Trail Project in the amount of $218,500. I think we talked about that last time. Any more discussion about that, or just want to make a motion to...
The grant was in your packets.
Yeah.
And reminder, this is one of two funding streams. The total project is just right at a half million dollars. It's this funding stream as well as $273 from the DOT grant, and actually, and I are actually meeting with the engineer, which is another item for review next. Meeting with them tomorrow, more specific to the DOT funding stream. But again, feel very excited about this, it's been on the docket for four or five years and a planning stage, and it's our second application for the DNR Water Trail funding stream, so, you know, they were excited to award it to us, and we were, once again, there were four awards given, we were one of those four, and the largest one collided, so.
Nice.
It's always nice to see Grant on there.
Yes.
And then we're going to work on guys up north to start pumping some water into the river so we can have water coming down through here, so.
There will be water eventually.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Lindberg.
You're here.
I didn't hear that. I heard an echo.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Next up then, we have to, need to approve the submittal for a DNR request letter for grant funds in the amount of $218,500. That's what you were talking about, you and Ashley are working on that?
Uh, nope, this is still with this...
Just still the same project.
Yep. And so it's been contemplated in the grant, and says it on your cover, within that cover item. And this grant does allow up to 90% of the funds to be advanced upon a request on city letterhead, and this is for 90% of that 218, which is our 218.5. And they do recommend that, because of how, the state would like to get those dispersed since they've been allocated, and the fact that we'll likely have some engineering costs here in the first quarter or two anyway, because construction's most likely next spring at this point, since we'll need to go through a DOT letting likely this late fall or winter. So making this request for the 90% advance is in front of you, which again will help until the DOT funding stream is all, because that's probably a three to four months. That's what we're looking, I'm looking for your action on with this item.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, right.
Second. Motion by Lindberg, second by Peterson.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Next part of this project is to approve the LT Leon Engineering Agreement for the River Access Water Trail Project.
This agreement, as you noted in the packet, is an agreement for $32,000. Couple excellent benefits with this group is they specialize in water, hydraulics, and trails. They also did all the preliminary planning and preliminary engineering, and in addition, they also were the project lead and engineer for the Nishna Ben grant as well, so they will provide these services, and one of them is, we're meeting with them tomorrow to help us navigate all of the requirements with the DOT federal grant cycle, grant funds. And this $32,000 has been considered in that entire half million dollar project cost, so it's not an additional cost.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this agreement with LT Leon Engineering?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Next, we need to receive and file historical, Harlan Historical Preservation Committee minutes from February 22nd, 2024 meeting.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Rudolph.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
And out of those, that meeting, those minutes, was approved the recommendation for their HHPC for the approval of six applications for the downtown facade and upper story grants in the amount right around $33,000 of that 50. There were some explanations in there for a couple that didn't meet the requirements, so. Any other discussions about that? Kyle was there, I guess.
We have a three member here on one of those five as well. We've brought this to the council each year for concurrence, since this is contemplated in each year's budget for next fiscal year, and that's when this award cycle is for. That's why we look for concurrence prior to final budget submittal. And the noteworthy item here is that there were eight applications and six were approved, and I'd shared it with you before, and I know we've got Kyle here as well, but two reasons for the denials, one was that the work was already completed, and that's absolutely can't submit reimbursement after the fact, and then the second was incomplete, incomplete application for scope of work. And it was the committee's consensus to stick by what the guidelines are and not to start making exceptions, if God wants to make any... Wish we could allocate $50,000.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate that we have some remaining funding that's in there that wasn't able to be used, but we also have to have the precedence of following the application guidelines, as we don't want to get into the determination of making an exception for one, or eventually are we going to draw the line for another, so, you know, there's always nature to come back, and it's obviously to continue to improve our downtown, and we're very fortunate to be able to do this and provide this, and again, we've got some new applications, and there's $33,000 that we were able to give out to the six applicants, so.
Yep. And then, so then next year, Gene, we don't roll that $17,000 that's left, it starts fresh again, 50, right?
Right. I had asked that question too, and there was a, yeah, that's with tip funds and stuff, it's...
Nope, makes sense.
So. Yep.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the six applications?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
I know, it's a process, it's definitely you guys have fine tuned that process over the years. I was involved earlier, but since Kyle's gotten on there, it's gotten way better, so.
Local meetings, it's...
I know it's time, and it's, they come in, I'll talk to you, and questions, and Jennifer's involved in that, reaching out to them to make sure they come in and talk, and this makes it a lot smoother, so everybody's, everybody knows upfront what's going on, so. Thanks for all, here is the hard work. Next up, we need to receive and file the Airport Commission minutes from February 23rd of 2024.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Kroger.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Out of that meeting, we need to approve the recommendation to accept the base bid from Hal and Cal Inc. doing business as line and construction in the amount of $143,437.56 for hangar number six project.
Similar to the above, bringing this to the full council for concurrence from the commission, which we've done with the, this would not be the third powered or hydraulic door project at the airport with continued improvements, and the same contractor did the last project and did an excellent job, and there were actually two bids that were in front of the commission, and this was the low bid for the base amount. So, prior to moving forward and signing the contract that was in the plans and specs that you'd already approved, just need your final concurrence on this.
When they started that work, do you know?
To be determined, but I know they're getting anxious to get some materials ordered, and with the nicer weather, I think we're one of the few contractors that are getting a little gung ho to things, ensure things are lined up for the spring. I don't have an exact date.
Gene, was this two doors or three doors? Okay.
Three.
Three doors.
Yep, and there's seven doors total on this hangar.
Thank you.
And this would do the three on the north side.
You making the motion?
Making the motion. Helen Co., Mining Construction.
Okay. Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Next, we need to receive and file the Insurance Committee minutes from February 27th, 2024 meeting. Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
And out of that meeting, review the recommendation to renew the health, dental, and short-term disability insurance effective July 1 of 2024. There was a nice explanation in there about some other costs, I mean, what we're doing is basically saving us some money, it sounds like, but the group we belong to, our insurance things.
And we had three at that committee meeting, there's a combined, it's a combined committee with HMU board as well as council members. I believe this will be in front of the HMU board for their concurrence at your March meeting as well, and 3.1% renewal on the health is quite more than solid. Last year was 2.47%, and we, as a reminder, HMU and the city are one member of this entire group of 45-plus other governmental entities, and we've been in it for 13-plus years now, and you've got probably more history. And with insurance, once again, laws of large numbers and being in a pool, so we're in a pool of approximately 5,000 members and 9,000 or 10,000 insureds, and even though we've had some poor experience for our specific group the last few years, when you average that out amongst the overall pool, the 3.1% increase is more than acceptable, so.
Yeah, and then, it was a dental in short term, there was no...
No changes, that's good 3.5.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? Motion to approve that recommendation?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Obstain, since I benefit from that, I can't open it.
Peterson.
Moving right along, City Administrators Report.
I've got three and a half pages that Kyle can see here.
He can't see.
No, it's a update on a couple of things for you as councils, well as our community. Actually, one of these is just ironic timing, that in my mailbox today, I got the second or the, or the first reminder, the second mailing, just awareness once again to the community, this is an optional sewer line warranty program. We've not, the calls to city, we've not had a tremendous amount of calls to City Hall, but we just remind folks that any questions, comments, to call the toll free number or visit the website. Entirely optional program for your sewer line from, on your property out where it connects to the city main. We also encourage that it's a good opportunity to talk to your insurance agent to determine what may or may not be covered, or could be covered on your own insurance policy. So, this is a second mailing, and simply a follow-up mailing on a call to action, but it's entirely voluntary. Some of you may have received that as well if you've gotten the second one.
Correct. I did, just one question on the roll call, I'm curious as to the meaning of why it's addressed like it's from the city of Harlan.
As we provided the marketing okay and support, again, we're one of 115-plus Iowa communities that, as well as a number across the nation that are, it also helps just in terms of identity and helping ensure that it is a valid, viable option. And we've had some of the increase because with the amount of, we'll say fishing and spam and other non-credible deals, it helps provide some credibility to it, so. Just want to remind folks on that. With the nicer weather, today's another nice day, there have been a few inquiries to our park staff that could we open the restrooms? Still too early to open the restrooms, it might, there's still more than a chance or two that it could freeze, and, you know, our restrooms are winterized for a reason to minimize broken pipes. So, first time is in past years, first time we would look to open those restrooms would be after April 15th. Again, apologize for any inconvenience to those that want to get out and enjoy our parks and open spaces, yet just try to plan ahead, and wanted to inform all of you of that. On the topic of parks, the Dream Playground Reimagine Committee, which again, the master planning and conceptual plans continue to adorn the wall here, in terms of that very significant quality of life improvement for a fully accessible reimagined playground, that the fundraising committee continues to be quite active, really appreciate the businesses who have fallen, have advertised and shared a portion of their profits. Any other businesses that wish to do so, feel free to contact any of the committee members, as well as you can contact City Hall, and we'll get you plugged into the right folks. And an activity this week that the committee put together is, Thursday night at the high school, is Inclusion Night, and there's going to be a table up there with information about the project, as well as opportunities to donate there. In addition, IV has agreed to put donation buckets and canisters at the checkouts, so really appreciate that partnership as well, again, passing that along from the, from the committee. One other significant and noteworthy comment related to the project is that, as was in front of you before, was with a quarter million dollar commitment and donation from a family, which the name of the playground would be Grandma Bee's, and unfortunately, a week ago today is when that family lost their mother and spouse, and that was Bonnie Beeman. So if you've seen some of the notices about that in the paper, as well as on the radio, it does reference that, any memorial money, as well as that the naming of the playground is in her memory, because that is where the money is coming from, from the Beeman family of a quarter million dollars in her memory. Well, at that time, didn't know it was going to be in memory, but our sympathies and support to the family, but also our deep appreciation for such a significant impetus towards that effort to make this a reality. So, again, that's the Bonnie Beeman will be Grandma Bee's Dream Playground, so. Any comments? I did speak with some of the fundraising committee members, and also the individuals that have been working with the family, simply to ensure that, making my comments tonight, were in line with their wishes, and they certainly are, so. Mark your calendars, I know it's a little over a month, but when this re-airs, and also get on your calendars, that on Wednesday, April 10th, at 10:30, there will be an ambassador visit, and that's for National Library Week, and that's traditionally been an annual visit to the library, and again, just hats off to having such an excellent vibrant library with much more than books, and so you're all welcome to attend that, it's a community event, Wednesday, April 10th, at 10:30. Attended the fire department banquet just a week ago, and congratulations to the firefighter of the year, and that is Zach Jenson, and that's voted on amongst the peers in the apartment, and again, appreciate all the volunteers, as well as congratulations to Zach. One quick show and tell, if you've, hopefully you've not taken too much notice, because they've, I don't know if I can get this to expand a little bit, there we go. So as you're driving along the 59 corridor, this is just beneath the water tower on the north entrance, and you'll notice some construction stakes, some nice pink painting on them. So that is the proposed north location on the new welcome sign. Whoops, I guess there are two different images here.
Took about that long to get approved, so.
Well, I'll just keep that in the painting busy, because this will happen at some point, and we're well on the way to making this happen. So, it was a little bit rest winny day, and I think Joe's tucked in there somewhere, but there's likely going to be a slight, just need to make an adjustment due to some other utilities from when this was originally surveyed, probably this sign will have to go a little bit south, but nonetheless, we'll greet visitors coming from the north.
Like Lewis and Park surveyed it, is that what they had back in that day?
Just after Lewis and Park, yeah, so. Such a supportive group that... So, the materials are on order, likely, they were indicating about an eight-week lead time, so expecting real activity in terms of installation on that first or second week of May, based upon how things are looking. That doesn't include doing any of the site work and the footing, so those will likely happen in April. Now, I thought a picture's worth a thousand words, so just enough, let that just put a little more excitement and credibility to it, so. The last two items I have, the city of Dyersville, here in the past two weeks, were victim of a phishing and cybersecurity attack to the tune of about half a million dollars, in which there was a request, a false request for wire transfer, and they wired out over half a million dollars.
Wow.
Really appreciate Austin from the county reached out to me a few days ago, just offering support as well as awareness around cybersecurity. And it's a good reminder, we remind our staff regularly that are using any technology and systems that, and this is based upon studies, that 90 to 95% of cybersecurity and the issues happen around, it's the people, it's not the technology. It's the awareness of people and team members and staff to recognize if you're not expecting an email, especially someone asking you to wire a half a million dollars. It's very unfortunate for another community to have that happen, yet I'm quite confident that the city of Harlan staff is on very high alert for anything of that nature, as well as we regularly identify, I wasn't looking, I wasn't expecting this from Mayor J, oh, it's a spoof email. So, but I really appreciate it, Austin, for coming reaching out on that topic. And again, no one's 100% foolproof, yet again, 90 to 95% of it is just a human element. You're all in business as well, and just a reminder for all of us, as well as our community, to be aware of those things. And the last item I have is, I commented it to the last meeting, and I plan to comment it at the next two meetings. And this is specific to, I plan to have more detail, so might want to bring your pillows and blankets to the next meeting. And this is specific to the continued implementation of House File 718 on property tax reform from a year ago. And what I pointed out last meeting, and I brought the same sample to this meeting, is this is the statement that will be mailed to every Harlan resident, as well as every Shelby County resident, around the 20th of this month. And we have the hard city of Harlan information filled in, and it's very small print right now at the bottom, yet what you've all seen, what's in your packet, at the bottom of this, it shows a negative 16-point, 16-point, I forget, 22, or yes, a negative 16.22 drop in the city of Harlan tax rate. It's unfortunate that that is misleading, and it provides the wrong information, and I'll say the same words at the next meeting and on the April 2 public hearing. And it's more about education, and I think it's a great opportunity for our governing body. I think it's a good opportunity for the other governing bodies as well, I've talked to a few of them from the county and the school, to see this as an opportunity to educate. I'm going to read the same statement tonight, as I'll share at the next two meetings. And again, the city of Harlan, this prescriptive, I'm turning this thing very prescriptive, because this is prescribed by the state of Iowa. There's no flexibility in what was passed in the legislation last year. That this prescriptive statement, as well as the newspaper publication that is a public notice around what the tax asking is, is showing a decrease of 16.22% in the tax rate. This is misleading and leaves the wrong impression. The transparent, real story is that the city of Harlan is requesting 6.3% more in taxes than last year, and this percent will vary based upon parcel and type of classification, be it commercial, business, but it varies greatly by, I want to take you down to the parcel level. And as a side note, last year, the city of Harlan's request was 3.54% less in taxes than the previous year. Over the last five years, the city of Harlan annual tax asking has been an increase of 1.75%. And again, it'll be the same message, I'll give them two weeks with some more of the data that you've seen before. In that five-year period, the average annual inflation's been 3.96%, which goes to show that families, individuals, and businesses, we've all been impacted by inflation, yet as a city of Harlan, we've asked less than a half, actually about 40% of what inflation's been during that same time period. And rest assured that with your governance and our prudent approach to budgeting and spending, that as well as providing quality services, that we believe we've done more than a yeoman's work in considering all that information, all that data. Again, just a reminder, and we'll keep kind of beating the drum, if you will, and it's not a bad thing, it's just about, just be aware when you get this, take some time to look at it, because it's accurate in its way it's positioned, but it's misleading and gives the wrong impression. And be happy to, again, once individuals get those statements, they can come to the public hearing on the second, or stop in the City Hall at any time, and we'd be happy to talk that through with them. And with that, that's all I have. Thank you for the opportunity and the time. And welcome to have any commentary.
Any questions, comments, concerns, or is CPA agree?
It's been a lot of fun.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Gene. I don't have anything under my report. Apologize for not making the firemen's gathering. I had grandson born that day, so I had to be grandpa, so I was playing on, but grandson trimmed being a fireman that night. Sure they carried on. What's that? I had to go get two older ones to bring back to my house, so I got to see the youngest one, but I had to bring the other two back to hang out. I'll move on to Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry. Tom?
Evening, everyone.
Tom?
Just one quick comment, this time around with CGI Digital, they're doing a great job of reaching out to the businesses in town. We've had a lot more conversations through our office than we did the last time we did this video, and from a wider variety of potential sponsors, so just wanted to give them a quick congratulations, which they're doing great about right now. Just some date items, this Friday at 10 o'clock, over at the Harlan Social Energy and Nutrition, they just joined the chamber, so we're going to have a ribbon cutting for them. And if you stop by to get something to drink, make sure you bring a little bit of extra money with you, because one of the things they're doing is they have a collection going when you're in their store, and that collection will be used to pay children's library fines. So, I thought that was a pretty cool idea that they had. Sunday, March 10th, there's going to be the Legion Post Fundraise for Breakfast from 7:30 to 11:00. And of course, that goes a long way to helping cover the cost of the fireworks in July, so if you get a chance to go down, it's a free will donation for the breakfast. The Chamber Banquet is March 15th at the Harlan Golf and Country Club. Doors open at 5:30, and we'll have the meal at 6:00, and then we'll have games and awards afterwards. And then, speaking of things happening in the legislature, I don't know if you have been following, but there's been a lot happening over the last few days. And March 16th will be our next legislative coffee, it'll be at 10:00 a.m., and it's going to be hosted down at the Pinkelman Pastries by the Danish Villages Improvement Organization. And then finally, just a reminder that on March 26th is the 4-H Pancake Supper, getting big fundraisers for them, be from 5:00 to 7:30, the pancake man will be there, and it's at St. Michael's Parish Hall. That's what we have for this evening.
I had talked to Dick Kane over the weekend about some of the music things, but he said he were coming the next week or two to work on lights, he said downtown.
That's what I hope.
I mean, that time he's going to work on music things, too.
Okay, yeah, he...
He's got a speaker or something, he's got a place.
I reached out to him, and it was kind of funny, the day I reached out to him, I said, okay, I've had an update for a while. He said, yeah, a big box just showed up on his delivery, so he just had to go through it, make sure he had all the stuff that he needed, and it sounds like he does, so yeah, looking forward to getting that fixed up. And yeah, we'll go from there.
Because lighting goes through the chamber now, is that?
The lighting goes through the chamber, and because we're, we need to reform a new downtown group, but for right now, we're taking care of it until I get some.
And then music is through city. Yeah, so he said he was going to be here, and there was just some questions about the music then, and I asked him, he said, yep, he'd be taking care of that, too, when he was here, because he had a big boom truck coming, whatever they're going to do, so.
Yeah. I think last time he brought his own truck.
Yeah.
They couldn't quite get to where they needed to get.
No, so things are coming back with a little bit bigger equipment.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Tom? All right, thank you, Tom. HMU, Joe Rouschenberger.
Hello, everyone?
Joe?
Hi, Joe.
Joe? So, I'm just going to guess, just some updates. McCarthy Trenching is looking to start back up Monday, March 11th, on our water project. Continue to work on that. Also, with that project, Holstein Electric, and I mentioned that before, it has been kind of working onsite through the winter when they could, but mainly like this week, they're working to start pulling some of the primary electric cable and fiber this week, too. They've got some work done in some of the existing well buildings, people want to hang in the box, just getting ready for it. They've made some progress. On that same note, our deep well that we were proposing, we did the deep test well in our east well field, to try to see if we could get into a different aquifer. That was actually drilled two weeks ago, and we did end up into a great formation. 270 foot to 315 foot below the surface, there's a 45 foot of sand and gravel we'll be able to pull water out of. Propose, the well contractor, he had mentioned, after we test pumped it last week, it looks like we could potentially get, I mean, if we wanted to, potentially try to get almost 1,000 gallons a minute out of that one well. So, I mean, it's a great find, granted, we probably will, you know, pump it maybe around 500, 600, you know, once we finally get design on it, but that's to be determined, but it was a great find for that project. Another item, overhead-to-underground electrical project that we got out to bid, and I had mentioned that before, is kind of our final overhead-to-underground conversion for our electric system. That is set to bid March 18th. Right now, we got about five plant holders on that plant holders list, so there's some pretty good interest on that, so we should get some pretty good numbers, we're hoping. And then also wanted to mention, as of beginning of this month, March 1st here, we have a redundant internet connection with Zayo and Ardeon, so that's something that our new telecom director, our superintendent's been working on, so we got that up and going. And then lastly, too, I got a little show and tell, too, I know you guys have probably seen the press release, but as far as the Iowa Water Association Community of the Year for our water system, so that was something we got February 20th, up there in Des Moines, so we're awfully proud of that also.
Very nice.
Page of today's paper, too.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so it kind of explains in there kind of some of the things we've been doing, I guess, that set us apart from somebody other water system as far as new projects, some of the maintenance we've done over the years, just to try and keep the water flowing.
Good article.
Yes.
A lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes into it that a lot of people don't understand, or...
Right.
And also, kudos.
But things are really looking up, like I said, with our well project, so. Any questions or comments for me?
Can you touch base, I guess, in reference to maybe an explanation, a mailing recently that went out to reference to the telecommunications and the speeds increasing with no, are they doubling, or?
Yes, everybody's doubling. So, if you had 50, 50 meg service, it's going up to 100.
Okay.
And with that rate increase, I mean, at least you're getting something with that rate increase.
Okay.
So, same thing, if you're 100, you go up to 200.
Is that going in stages, or is there like a specific date that that's going live?
April 1st.
Okay.
And I think we've got some pretty good, I mean, I guess, do you need to comment on it, too?
I'm a council member, too.
We've got some pretty good comments. I think we've got some pretty good comments.
No, we have, we've gotten a lot of good customer comments, calling.
Everybody's kind of thinking, you know, we're still within the range, and especially doubling that speed on the internet, you know, at least you're getting something for that increase.
Good deal.
Thank you. Anything else?
Looking good to fill the pool, because we're going to survive a million.
Well, I think, yeah, if we can get this, get that well online, it shouldn't be no issue. I mean, that's the whole, that's the whole.
That would go online when, Joe? As soon as you would see that one?
We're waiting to get, of course, we did the test pumping, but then we're waiting to get the water sampling back, and that could be a couple of weeks yet. So, then we should get all that information, clear engineering, and then they'll start on a design of that. Hopefully, the DNR will kind of fast-track, you know, the approval of the design of this well, since we're going from shallow to deep. Maybe by May, we'd have approval for a contract, for the contractor to actually move forward with it, if we, if all the approvals work out. So, by June, maybe we'd be drilling, I mean, it'll probably be middle...
For the end of the season, then, it's more like summer season.
Well, in the middle of the summer, maybe we'd have it up and running, if everything goes right. If not, maybe a little earlier, but, you know, maybe the middle of summer. So, hopefully, that comes online about when we're having our hardest usage due, so. And then, on that same note, the two other shallow wells that are in our south well field, those actually did get drilled, we just didn't get a wellhouses over, you know, we got wellhouses over one, and we started utilizing that new well. So, within, I would say, within six weeks, we should have those other two, well, I take that back, I don't think the well building's going to get built till the end of this month, so end of April, hopefully, we'd have those two online, so at least we'll have those to help us get through until we get that deep well online.
So, a lot of positives going into this season.
There is, yeah, yeah, there is. Looking good.
Good job.
Good work.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Any public comments? Comments from up here?
Life is good.
Wow. That's good, all right. Now, we're going to get ready to go into closed session. Do we need, wait until, let people leave, we make that motion, make the motion now? Okay, we're going to make the motion, and we'll go into closed session.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion, Rudolph, second by Peterson.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Do you want to wait to read while we're doing it? Give them a five-minute break, and then come back and hear all...